Welcome to the January 13th, 2020 Board Meeting. It's nice to see you all here since we often have an empty room other than the Board. I am not going to be shaking hands or breathing on you tonight as I have a bad cold and I brought my masks and everything and I am optically separated from the rest of the Board for that reason. But hopefully I'm not going to get anyone ill. The first order of business on the agenda is an announcement from Chief Gagny. Very positive, happy announcement, so Chief Gagny?
I'll get that down where I can see it. Thank you for giving us this time tonight. Several people I'd like to recognize as part of this announcement. One would be Jill Sprague, the wife of the late Police Chief Pearlie Sprague, the Rockport Police Department. Jill can't be with us tonight, but she's asked us to go ahead and make this announcement in her absence. I'd also like to recognize Detective Sergeant Joel Neal, who's seated up back here from the Rockland Police Department. And one of your own who's seated with you tonight, Chief Mark Kelly, who's now retired and a current Board member. Tonight's been a long time coming, 23 years plus. In the summer of 1996, Maine Marine Patrol's retired Colonel Pearlie Sprague came to Rockport and became Rockport's Police Chief. Chief Kelly was a captain at the time, serving under Chief Sprague. With all new administrations comes changes. Pearlie came here with new ideas and new visions, and one of the things that he implemented was physical agility testing for all new hires and potential officer candidates. On November 15th, 1996, while performing his official duties as Police Chief of the Town of Rockport, Chief Sprague was administering a physical assessment test to Officer Candidate Joel Neal, who's seated with us tonight at South Field in Rockland. During Neal's last lap, in a show of support -- my phone that's doing that. Show of support during Officer Neal's last lap, Chief Sprague ran in full uniform to encourage his potential candidate, potential officer. It was during that last lap that Chief Sprague suffered a cardiac event which was fatal. Chief Sprague's passing was a huge, huge loss to the Rockport Police Department, the Town of Rockport, and law enforcement from around the area. During the years, Chief Kelly, Craig Cooley, and a number of others tried to get Chief Sprague's name placed on the Maine Law Enforcement Officers Memorial. But due to the criteria that they have, his death was not ruled ad work type death, so he was not eligible to be placed on that. Last year, there was some momentum to change that, to make the entry standards or the criteria to be placed on the Maine Law Enforcement Officers Memorial the same as the federal standard for acceptance on the federal wall in Washington DC. Those measures, however, did not pass, and the criteria in the State of Maine remains the same. While doing research into this, I read all the reports, I read the letters that Mark and Craig had sent to the state to get Pearlie's name placed on the state's memorial wall. At that time, I noticed that Chief Sprague's name had never been considered for the national monument in Washington DC. So I called Jill Sprague and asked if she minded if I pursued this, because it'd never been pursued before. After getting her blessing, I got in touch with Mark and Craig and Joel Neal and my former Police Chief Terry Burgess, who is retired. I told them what we were up to and what we wanted to do, because Pearlie's name rightfully belongs on the memorial wall. In April of this year, I drafted a letter requesting that Rockport Police Chief Pearlie Sprague's name be added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Wall in Washington DC. The letter and relevant information were accepted and reviewed by the National Monument Committee. I am pleased to announce tonight that during Police Weeks in Washington DC in May, Chief Pearlie Sprague's name will be added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial. A very long time coming, but we're getting there. And I am in hopes, as long as I am in a position here, and I've got Mark Kelly's support and everybody else's, we'll still pursue trying to get his name added where I feel it rightfully belongs, on the state law enforcement officers memorial. Thank you.
Is he ready?
Bill, would you like me to mention the other thing that we found out today? On a happier note, I would like to announce that Officer Paul Thompson from the Camden Police Department will be recognized by the Maine Chiefs of Police and awarded an Act of Bravery Award at their, at the Fall Awards Banquet, Winter Awards Banquet in Portland. Officer Thompson was filling a vacant shift in Rockport on December 2nd, and for the first time in his career, had to give life-saving measures to not one, but two people at two separate incidents within two hours of each other. One was a suspected overdose subject that he and Officer Wesley Butler administered Narcan to and monitored till rescue came, and several more doses of Narcan were given to that person before they finally came around. Less than two hours later, Officer Thompson was called to the Schooner Bay Motor Inn to a fire. Upon arrival, he was directed to a room on the second floor, which smoke was coming out of. He raced up to the second floor, checked to see if there was excessive heat coming, and had to make a life decision to enter that room to see if there was anybody in there. He kicked the door open, smoke immediately came out of the room, and he noticed someone on the bed. He took that person out onto the stairway, started CPR, and immediately flames erupted from the room. At that time, he picked the person up, took them down two flights of stairs, where he and a citizen attempted life-saving efforts again, but were unsuccessful. He didn't hesitate to go into that room risking his own life, and I think it's a very great award that he's going to be accepting from the Maine Chiefs. Working together, having those people know these areas, quick response, just pays great dividends. And lastly, John Poole has finished his second week at the Police Academy. He's returned for number three. Two of the hardest ones are out of the way, but he's keep plugging along, so thank you very much.
Thanks. Many of you will remember Officer Poole was the one that was just pinned at the last Select Board Meeting. Is that correct?
Yes.
Town Manager's Report?
Yes. I did note in my Manager's Report, I'll skip out of order if you will, that Officer Poole was on the waiting list for the Maine Criminal Justice Academy, but on the morning, I believe, of December 31st, he was notified to report that day to the Criminal Justice Academy, so a spot had opened up for him. So he has been there for a couple of weeks, as Chief Gagny has said. I'm also pleased to announce that five current Rockport Volunteer Firefighters have volunteered to attend EMT training beginning in February. As you know, we're trying to institute some first responder programs here in Rockport, but also in Camden. In addition, there are two current Rockport Police Officers that have also volunteered to attend this training. There is a cost to this training to the Town of $995 each. I've applied for a workforce grant to help cover some of that expense, hopefully, should we receive that grant. I think overall, that class has, I want to say 30 individuals signed up between Camden and Rockport and Hope and maybe even Rockland, I'm not sure. So I think that effort is, will help us a great deal moving forward as we consider our options when it comes to EMS services here.
Yeah, Bill, can you just give a few words to that sort of bigger context of, you know, getting these people, these first responders, trained?
Sure, so if we have first responders that are trained, then we will be able to have them respond directly to an emergency scene for an ambulance call such that, so they can provide some basic aid to individuals while the ambulance crew is arriving or on the way. Because we don't have our own municipal EMS service or ambulance service, and the response times that we're, that our service has, they have nine minutes basically on average over a quarter to respond with an ambulance. So somebody that calls 911 that may have, we'll just say, experiencing chest pains or something of the like, has to wait for at least nine minutes for an ambulance to respond in some instances, with no other assistance at that point. With first responders, they can, the first responder can arrive and begin at least taking vital signs, calming the person down, relaying information to the ambulance that's on the way, and some other basic first aid and medical care. So that'll be a huge benefit, I think, for the community as we move forward. Finance Director Megan Brackett was approved by the Maine Municipal Tax Collectors and Treasurers Association as a certified treasurer. This certification process requires a number of hours of training in courses related to her duties, and she'll be recognized at the Maine Municipal Tax Collectors and Treasurers Association's Annual Conference. Along those same lines, as you know, with the Manager's Certification, there's also a potential for a discount on the Town's insurance because of that certification. Don't know what that, how much that amount will be, but we'll find out next year when we renew our insurance.
So thank you to Megan for taking the initiative and time to put into that.
Well, it's also important, I think, to showcase that the Town, the Board of Selectmen, the Budget Committee also providing funds to allow us to attend trainings that will allow us to get these certifications. It obviously helps the Town in many ways, because we can do our jobs better, and we get the discounts for insurance too. But it is, thanks to everybody for that. I renegotiated, or negotiated the lease agreement with Mainly Lobster at the Harbor. It expired on December 31st of 2019. In preparation for those renewal negotiations, the Harbor Committee had provided some thoughts on the lease, and I worked with Harbor Master Abby Leonard, and we negotiated a five-year lease agreement with Mainly Lobster. We did increase the annual cost by $2,100 in the first year, we had a big jump in the first year, and then $200 each year thereafter. We also, in the agreement, Mainly Lobster will agree to pay for the dumpster rental that has been there, which saves the Town about another $2,200 per year. And we did enter it into a five-year lease versus a three-year lease, which is what it had expired and what's been happening over the previous lease agreements. It allows them some comfort in knowing that it's a five-year lease versus a three-year. The Walker Park seawall, I've had a meeting with the abutting landowner. As you know, we've been working on, we're working with Will Gartley, Gartley and Dorsky, on design for stabilization of that seawall. And it does, it's split pretty much evenly between the abutting landowner and the Town in Walker Park. The bid documents have been prepared by Will Gartley and have been reviewed by the abutting landowners and approved, and I still have to review those, I just got those towards the end of last week. We're going to put that out to bid. It's a little difficult situation, because we don't necessarily have the funding in our budget for this fiscal year to be able to repair that seawall. But we wanted to get it out to bid so that we have some numbers in place. And we're going to bid it out two ways, such that we can do it as one joint project, or we can do it, the abutting landowners can do theirs first, and then the Town can do it later on, should we have the funding later on.
How much if I might have, is left of the 8,000 engineering costs?
That's all going towards the engineering costs, including the bid documents and the permitting. So that'll all go towards that. And the DEP is, the permits have already been applied for through DEP, and they're, they've already done a site walk, and they don't see any issues with the permitting at all. But there was a fee, of course, for the DEP permits as well. But it's going to be significantly less cost to do the construction than what was anticipated when I first arrived back in August.
That's a good thing.
Yes.
And is there grant funding available for that kind of project?
There is potential grant funding available, which is another reason why we might want to look at putting our share off until the fall. You really want to do this construction project either in February, March, or in the other end, November, so that you can be away from the residents and the harbor activity and that type of thing, and away from rainy seasons as well, for obvious reasons with construction. But we do, that will allow us to apply for grants as well to try to help pay for that At your February 10th meeting, Architect Amanda Roberson Austin of Two A Architects will present a proposal for schematic design for the West Rockport Fire Station. As you know, this is a project that's been on the Board's agenda, the Town's agenda, for several years. At that meeting, we plan on laying out the process and the timeline, as well as the expected tasks associated with the design and other tasks moving forward with that This Center for Furniture Craftsmanship provided a payment in lieu of taxes in the amount of $6,000 on December 30th to the Town. It's always good news.
Yes, thank you.
Actually, that was December 30th, 2019.
2019, yes. The LED streetlight project, so I have received the investment-grade audit from Real Term Energy, and essentially what that is, is it tells us the actual cost now that we know the number of decorative streetlights that are going to be installed. So it shows the actual cost of the project, as well as the expected efficiency that we'll gain from the new LED lights versus the old lights that we have in place now. I have received back the signed documents from Central Main Power, so as soon as we send a check to them, we'll own our streetlights. In the meantime, as soon as that check goes out, I've already made contact with the maintenance company that we've chosen to provide maintenance for streetlights, and they will be able to provide some interim maintenance on the lights that we're purchasing from CMP, especially in those areas that lights have been out for years. So the intent is to try to at least either put up a temporary light or fix what we have temporarily until the new LED lights can get in place. We'll have some savings from the lease costs of the streetlights that we won't have to spend, that's already in the budget, because we'll own them. And so I can use some of that funding to be able to put some temporary repairs at key locations. That's the plan, anyway. And then the project, the installation of the streetlights, of the new streetlights, will happen in March, April, depending on factors of when the products come in and which towns go first. As you know, there are six towns that are involved in this area.
And if I might, there's still the potential for the Tiff District?
Yes, absolutely.
To pay for some of the changes?
Yeah, we're looking at, looking at that with the budget that's be presented to the Board in February.
Thank you.
Do we have some recourse against CMP for having these streetlights that they haven't been repairing, even though we've been paying for them?
I'm going to pursue that, yes. I will be pursuing that.
And so, do you want to explain just a little bit about the smart controls and the ability to?
Sure, so the Board had decided to purchase smart controls along with the new LED streetlights, and what the smart controls will allow us, allow us to do, I think probably the most important thing, is that we'll be notified immediately when a streetlight is out, instead of having to rely on somebody to report the streetlight to be out. So there's a, it's a web-based computer program that will send a signal and will tell us when that streetlight is out, among other things. It'll also tell us when it's fixed, when it's back on, which is always a pleasant thing. So when you have your maintenance person going and checking it and getting it repaired, then we know when it's back on. We can brighten the lights when we want to, we can dim the lights when we want to, so we can control individual lights at residences, we'll say, if they're too bright at midnight, we can dim those down if we need to, or that type of thing. One interesting aspect about these smart controls that we've chosen is that it'll tell us the degree tilt of the telephone pole that the light's on, so we'll know which poles need to be replaced by CMP or which company owns them, which is an interesting thing as well. And they're set up so that currently, the PUC does not allow us to pay just for the electricity that's used for the streetlights. We have to pay based on what the wattage is of the light. But the PUC is potentially looking at new regulations that will allow, that will force CMP to charge just for the amount of electricity that's used. So then if we do dim lights, we're using less electricity, we'll actually have to be able to pay less. So there's many advantages to the smart controls.
And the key thing is, we're going to go from paying $55,000 a year down to about 11.
Yes.
You know, so there'll be a significant savings after about three years, I think, roughly.
Yeah, there's, and potentially sooner if we use some Tiff funds to be able to spend down some of that debt. The other aspect there, too, is that we're using the same funds for the streetlights, we're not increasing our budget. We're using what, we're using the savings to pay off those streetlights in the project. And so after three, four years, whatever the buyback time is, which I haven't figured out exactly yet, then we'll realize that savings in the budget completely. The dark fiber contract, so as you know, the Town had installed back in 2014, dark fiber. Did you have a question, Doug?
No, on wastewater inflow.
Yeah.
You were saving that, okay.
I will touch base on it.
You're out of order.
It's not a lot, I am out of order. So as you know, the Town had installed fiber along certain roads here in town back in 2014 with, in conjunction with GWI. Another company, Lincolnville Communications Incorporated, has asked to lease some more, some dark fiber from the Town. So with Deborah's help, and I think Denise probably even helped on the contract with the Town's attorney, and some feedback from myself, that contract should be on your agenda for the next meeting as well. So we'll actually be seeing some revenue from that, generating from that fiber there. I'll go to the wastewater inflow and infiltration analysis. So I did include in your materials, I hope.
Yeah, you did.
Yes, the lengthy memorandum from Woodard Inc. I won't go too much into it, other than to say that there weren't as many issues discovered as part of that survey as we had hoped, but there's still more work to be done. So we'll continue doing that, and they'll provide a follow-up analysis once all of the inspections have been done by the code officer. It's a difficult time of year to try to get into places to inspect, because a lot of people have left for the winter. So I think we're down to like six properties that we needed to inspect, or have the code officer inspect to make sure that they aren't illegally connected to the sewer system.
700 plus or so that have been completed, right?
Yes, yeah.
Quick question, though. I read through the analysis and the report, and it sounds like our citizens are doing a good job with the inflow study, inflow part of it. But, you know, I can remember a year ago, when we were sitting here, different Town Manager, and the main concern was, it seemed to be fairly well documented, that after large rainstorms, there were certain areas that had markedly increased flows, and this was, I believe, documented with cameras and everything. So, you know, the question is, okay, if we're not having a lot of, some pumps putting water into the system, where's that coming from? They say our system was put in 1990, so it's a good system, and we shouldn't have much infiltration of groundwater. It seems like there's still some questions that need to be answered.
Yeah, I think he touched, he touches base on that in the memo. I think there are still some other areas that need to be studied, and he did discuss that, I believe.
I think he just says, "I will."
Yes.
I mean, one of them, if I recall, was the old schoolhouse on the hill where their rooftop water was going into the system to be processed. That was one of the ones I recall.
So there is more information that's going to be provided?
But in the bottom line to that, again, it's, when Camden does their upgrades, we're going to be charged based on the volume we send them for processing. And I think we had a million some odd gallons, or there was quite a large number of gallons that were unaccounted for.
Right.
So if we can determine where that is and cut it off, then what we're going to be paying them in the future will be less, which is the whole...
Right, because we don't want to send rainwater to them and pay them that.
But, I mean, a lot of people may not know what we're, the bottom line of what we're talking about.
Right, plus the bills are going to go up from Camden anyway, because of, they're just increasing because of the new wastewater upgraded plant.
If my, if my memory serves, it has the potential of saving us $140,000, I think, was the number, if everything were found.
Sure.
So it's a substantial amount of money.
It is, and keeping in mind that it's the wastewater system users that pay that and not necessarily the taxpayer, the general taxpayers. So I think that's important to note that as well. But at the same time, there are obviously residents or business owners of the Town that we want to save them money as much as we possibly can.
Right, although isn't it triggered by your water use? It's assumed that your water use equals your...
Only if you're on the sewer.
Right.
It's where your bill is, but the wastewater that's shipped to Camden and Rockland is metered, so we do know how much is going that way.
And if it goes by your house, whether you're hooked up or not, you still pay a fee.
Right.
So it does affect more than those that are just hooked up to it.
One last note, tax lien foreclosure notices, the tax collector set out notices of impending automatic foreclosure for unpaid 2017 property taxes on January 3rd. There are 24 properties and five timeshares that have outstanding taxes for 2017. They have until February 7th at 5:00 to pay the taxes. After the deadline, the property owners must pay their 2017, 18, and first half of 2019 taxes in order to avoid foreclosure by the Town. And just for comparison's sake, last year, there were 21 properties and four timeshares that were sent these notices, so we're about the same.
Okay, thank you. So the next item on the agenda is public input on non-agenda items. So if you're here tonight, as I know that most of you, if not all of you, are to talk about something that's on the agenda, for example, appointment to the Comprehensive Plan Committee and so forth, we'll get to that on the agenda. So now is your time, if you're here for a non-agenda item, to get up and tell us what's on your mind. Anybody? No?
I do, as a citizen.
You okay?
I just want to make a brief editorial comment. This is sort of my new poster, I found it, I liked it, and it says, "Maine is changing, get involved." You'll notice it doesn't make any value judgment on the changes that are happening, it just says to be part of the process. And, you know, since I've been on the Board, you know, you see comments in the newspaper that people throw out there, that troll out there. They drive by, roll down their window and yell an insult at me or something like that. You know, that's not really getting involved, okay?
They didn't recognize me.
Yeah, they didn't recognize, they thought it was Mark. The point is, is, you know, we do hear, you know, people come in here, they're very upset about change, but you can be a part of that, join a committee, be part of the Town, be on a committee, and get involved, and that's what you need to do. So I'm just making a plea here for people at home and people here that may not have been on a Town Committee. It's not as bad as it sounds, and, you know, rather than, like I say, troll the newspaper comments or something, you know, give it a try, so.
And we thank those of you who are here to volunteer your time to be on a committee now, tonight, so. Okay, so, and the next item on the agenda is amendments to the agenda. Does anybody have any amendments, suggested amendments?
You do have the zoning Board of Appeals application that came in late.
Thank you, yeah. And you're right, thanks for reminding me now. So can we, let's, I would propose that we, we act on that right after the Comprehensive Plan Committee applications. Is that all right? Everybody? Anything else, any other changes? Okay, so the consent agenda is the next item. Since no one has asked to take anything off the consent agenda, I assume that the consent agenda is acceptable.
I move the Board to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Consent agenda?
It's consent agenda.
Well, it says calendar. Well, it says calendar in mine.
Oh, the, the motion does?
Either one is.
Oh, 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 the motion does, okay.
Reading it as it is.
Yes. All right, do we have a first and a second discussion? All in favor? Opposed? And thank you, Emily Lusher and Maggie Timmerman, for your service on the ZBA and the Parks and Beautification Committee. Appreciate your time and commitment and contribution. Okay, moving on to action items. The first act, the first one is the Act on Safety Plan Mission Statement. Bill?
Sure, this is simply the annual select board approval of the Town of Rockport Safety Plan Mission Statement, and it has not changed from last year.
I move the board to approve the Town of Rockport Safety Plan's Mission Statement as presented this evening.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Here is the mission statement, if you want to circulate this. The next thing is the Act on Comprehensive Plan Committee Applications. So we have a number of people here who have submitted comprehensive plan committee applications. Thank you very much for doing so. And, and I think that most of them are, are here tonight. So is it the board's will to ask each and every one of these people to come up? Or do you have questions, individual ones that you'd like to raise?
Board should keep in mind that we have eleven openings for residents and we have nine applicants at this point.
Any suggestions?
You know, I, I took the time, obviously, to look over the applications. Most of these people I know personally, there are a couple that I don't. Let's see, that zoning board. You know, I, I could see just going ahead and doing this on block without, unless the people have something specifically they'd like to say to us, I don't wanna take their time up. But I also feel bad asking to come tonight and then.
Yeah, run the, not, not let them talk. So maybe we could handle it very briefly, quickly. What do you think?
Let her rip.
Okay, Victoria, is Victoria here? Yeah, there you go. Could you come up to the, thanks. So we met Victoria recently for the planning?
Planning.
Planning board.
Back in November.
Yes, yes, that's, that's great. And, and you have now volunteered for the, or had your arm twisted or whatever.
Actually, this was my first application.
So we appreciate that. And Victoria, you're a, you're a mom and business owner.
I am.
And we are trying to get diversity on the comprehensive plan committee. So we have younger people as well as folks who have been here for a long period of time. And you're also in real estate, aren't you?
I am.
So I know we talked to you just recently in November, so thank you for, for applying. Anybody else wanna ask Victoria anything?
I move the board to appoint Victoria Condon to the Comprehensive Plan Committee.
Okay, okay, discussion. Do you wanna do them in mass?
Well, I was wondering, is there any expiration to any of these we're gonna be doing tonight that you wanna keep in mind?
There, there isn't simply because once.
For this one, but.
Yeah.
Or for others.
A lifetime appointment.
Lifetime appointment, great.
Like the Supreme Court.
Okay, any other discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor? Okay, none opposed. All right, thank you, Victoria.
Thank you.
We look forward to working with you. Robert Rankin Young. I think he's here, there we go. Thank you for applying. And did you, did you have a couple things that you wanted to say, or?
Yeah, I think you already answered, how long would it be?
There you go.
Well, I, I can speak to the process a little bit. I mean, we're, we're hoping that the comprehensive plan can be completed and ready for a town meeting vote in two thousand twenty-one. So really, the work will be done, most of it during this calendar year, probably with a little holdover into maybe January, February of next year. But probably one meeting a month. That's really up to the committee and staff to be able to figure that out. But most likely one meeting a month for the next thirteen, fourteen months.
Okay.
That's the goal, anyway.
Robert grew up here, so I imagine that most people know him and we appreciate your.
I've been away for quite a while, so.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize.
But, I do. It's a long story, but I do.
You don't have to share it all.
All right, well, it's good to put a, a name with a face.
Yeah.
I move the board to appoint Robert Young. Is it Robert or Bob?
Either one.
Okay, Robert's on Robert, to the Comprehensive Plan Committee.
Second. Second.
Okay, Mark seconded, any discussion? All in favor? No, none opposed. Okay, Bob Duke. Everybody knows Bob Duke.
Yeah. Now it gets a little.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's not unfortunate.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I've lived here just about all my life. I've been there, I've done the fire department, used to moderate the town meeting. I've always enjoyed serving the town in any capacity that I, that I can. I currently serve as the chairman of the Rock County Budget Committee, have done that for about twenty years. I'm also on the Midcoast School of Technology Board. And again, I enjoy the dynamics of a committee. Quite honestly, with Doug's sign, you wanna whip that sign out again, Doug? I, I, I do think that's very appropriate for whether you're a newbie to town or whether you're somebody that has lived here a very long time, and whether you embrace the changes that have taken place or haven't embraced them. I'm kinda mixed on a lot of those things. And the comprehensive committee, comprehensive plan committee is a committee that you could see the direction of the town going many different ways. And I'd love to be part of that. So that's why I'm, I'm signed up. And quite frankly, my evenings are free and I'm a little bored.
Well, thank you for your twelve years on the select board and it will be, it'll be great to have your, your input.
Bob, let me just ask you a little more detail. In your application, you said, "I'm concerned about the direction of our town."
Yeah.
I mean, we're all concerned about the direction of the town, but, you know. Can you be a little more specific? What are, what are some of the issues?
Well, I'm not sure I wanna get into it in a, in a, in a format like this, Doug. I'm happy to talk to you privately, but I, I do think, I mean, for instance, I personally am very opposed to the location of the library. I think it's a monstrosity, what's being built. And I think the influencers that got it there were a bit misguided. And so that's one reason. And I think we have a parking problem in the village and a lot of folks seem to disagree with that. It's January, what, thirteenth? And I have to park up, upper Union Street. So I think we do have a parking problem. And the live, the park, additional parking for the library isn't gonna be, and I wanna get, make this a library issue, but I, I think that we do have some issues. And I'm not sure if everyone has their head up, let's just say that. So.
I move to appoint Bob Duke to the Comprehensive Plan Committee.
Is there a second?
I'm having a hard time, and with all due respect, I just, I guess I worry about, and maybe this is just a given, that people coming to be on the comprehensive plan committee might have an agenda, I guess I.
I don't have an agenda.
Okay.
That decision has been made, am I right? Yeah, the voters voted for it, and I, I disagree with it.
Right, voters voted for it, and frankly, a prior select board made the decisions with respect to it, too. Not the current select board, not that I'm trying to distance us, but it is true.
Right, right. Yeah, I guess I would just want open-mindedness on, you know, things.
You don't, you don't really know me, Denise.
No, I don't.
We, we certainly sold you a piece of land, but that, you don't really know me.
Yeah, and I'm not, it's not a personal thing at all, it's really more.
I'm, I'm not one that's very guarded, I will express my thoughts.
Yeah.
Doug asked me, Doug asked me a question, I answered it.
Yeah.
I think for the historical value, I think you'll provide a great resource.
Yeah, it's good to have that background.
It's a lot more than perhaps some of the others that are listed on the, on the list, but.
And it's probably good to have a mix, and it really is nothing personal at all, Bob, and maybe you've just been more.
Not taken.
Fourth right about your, your views. I'll second.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay, thanks, Bob. Okay, Taylor Allen, another person that everybody knows, thank you, Taylor.
Your application was great, Taylor.
Do you have any background?
Do the point.
It would be helpful, yeah, do you have any background that would be helpful to the committee? Yes, I think so.
So anyway, I, I run a business in town on the harbor and I live in West Rockport. You know, I've been active in town affairs for some time and I was on a previous comprehensive plan committee and look forward to doing it again.
Right. Questions, anybody?
Nope.
It's with great pleasure that I move the board to appoint Taylor Allen to the Comprehensive Plan Committee.
Second? Second, okay. Any discussion, questions? All in favor?
Great, thank you.
Opposed, thank you. Okay, next, Dominic Cridisco. You and I have emailed one another a couple of times, nice to meet you in person.
Yes, like life.
And I won't touch, shake your hand?
No, no, that's, that's all right. Good evening, I realized no one knows me here, so I.
Yeah, it might make sense to get a little bit about your background.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that, and I, and I also recognize that this is a bit of an unusual offer to volunteer on a comprehensive plan committee where my wife and I, my family, you know, we only recently bought a house here in Rockport. We've been coming for fifteen years here as renters and have loved the area. And our long-term plan is to be here gradually more over time, especially, you know, over the next ten years or so. And so this happens, however, to fall into an area of what I actually practice in New York, which is where we are from. And so in New York, I'm a land use attorney and I practice land use law, municipal law, where I represent a number of municipalities and also people that are looking to, you know, do things as far as business-wise for the future. And we, you know, have that experience. And I actually serve on the comprehensive plan committee for my own community right now, which is Cornwall and Hudson in New York. And there are some similarities between Cornwall and Hudson and Rockport, if I, if I may. You know, we, we are a historical community that has a great deal of assets. We are on the river, we have a riverfront, we don't have a harbor front, but we have a riverfront, which is one of our primary assets. And we have a lot of challenges with housing in particular and making sure that there's affordable housing for people that, you know, have grown up in the area and want to stay. We have a significant problem with our fire department because they continue to train people who are younger and bring them into the fire department as volunteers, but then they actually can't afford to stay or they don't have jobs in order to stay in the area. And so our fire department is struggling in, in Cornwall and Hudson.
We don't have a problem with our, our fire department, so there's no similarity.
That's fantastic.
We have a great fire department with the chief sitting right there.
I'm glad to hear it, you know, and, but I only point these out as, as some issues that, that, that tend to come up in, in comprehensive planning. And I wanna, you know, be clear about a couple different things, if, if I may. You know, is, is that even though I'm an attorney, I'm not looking to give legal advice. And more importantly, I'm not looking to, you know, force my opinion on anyone else as far as how I would think that it could be done. Like, I, I just offer, I think, a number of different perspectives as to challenges and things that are changing. Because one, one of the things that is true, and, and I really appreciate the sign being put up about Maine is changing, is change is actually happening everywhere. And many people, what I do is, is, you know, I represent a number of developers for larger-scale projects. So recently, I represented Legoland, which is building its first theme park in the northeast in New York. And they were my client from the inception of that project to now where it's opening up in July. And, you know, people were concerned, validly so, about how the nature of like a, a project like a theme park coming to their community was going to change their community. And the reality is, is that the communities themselves are, are changing. What we do is we have a perception oftentimes, you know, that things aren't changing. And the thing to do is to be mindful of, of the essential character of your neighborhood and, and the place that you live and to wanna maintain those things, but also to be vibrant at the same time. And that's the balance that you try to strike. I also applied because I was interested from a, you know, personal perspective is, is that we've made a commitment by buying a home and wanting to be here and planning on being here, you know, when our son goes off to college, to be here full-time at that point. And we wanna know about the community. And so I figured that, that even though we've been coming for fifteen years, like what better way to like know about how the community is evolving over time, but to actually serve? And so that was why I was willing to do it. I realized that there may be some concern because, quite frankly, we are not residents now. We do come up often, you know, I'm here now and, you know, we plan on continuing to come up often. And, but that's, I, I wanted to be completely upfront about all of that.
And you and I had had some exchange of email, which I had explained, too, that state law doesn't allow us to vote or establish quorums telephonically, which I think is archaic, but it is the law. So you had to be physically present at these monthly meetings in order to vote or be part of a quorum.
Yes, no, I, I appreciate that, you know, and to be completely upfront and honest is, is that I represent two different municipal boards in New York, and we have set meetings. And so we have set the sketch, a set schedule where I know that I am occupied on three nights of a month. And so if it turns out that what, what works best for the comprehensive committee here conflicts with my schedule, I would withdraw because as, like, as a practical matter, I would never be able to attend. But if it does work, I would make every effort to be here as much as I can. And if I felt that I was not contributing or if I was in some way a hindrance, I would certainly withdraw because I don't wanna do anything to, you know, stop the process.
Any other questions?
Well, yeah, it's, obviously, you've got a great skill set and I find that pretty attractive for the, for the committee. But, you know, you're right, the elephant in the room is attendance at meetings and stuff. I suppose if we had fifteen applicants for eleven slots, I would say, you know, thank you very much, Dominic, but we'll fill them with people that are here, but.
I would understand that.
Yeah.
I would say that I did walk to the meeting tonight, but then, of course, the drive up, you know, I've.
So.
Yeah, and I think your application says you'll make every attempt to be.
Yes.
Here in person for the meetings.
Yes, you know, and plus.
Unless they're on one of those three nights that you already have.
That, that is true, you know, and, you know, we could discuss that if, if it comes to pass. But, you know, it, it, look, I like coming up, you know, and, and, you know, I'm gonna go to eighteen Central tonight afterwards for dinner. You know, like I, I, I enjoy all of the things that are available up here and, and like being here. So it's not really a hardship, it's really a question of scheduling, so.
Well, as Doug said, I think that your skill set is very, obviously, you know, very valuable and, you know, your insights would be, you know, interesting from a different perspective.
Are you licensed to practice inmate?
No, no, and I'm, I have no intent, no intention of, of becoming licensed to practice inmate. No, I come here to get away from practicing law, so thank you.
May I ask just how you ended up coming here for fifteen years? I mean, did you have family or school?
No, I, I had a friend who used to summer on Monhegan Island. She was my tutor a long time ago. And so I brought my wife back in two thousand and four. And we came, we actually rented a house on Spear Street, and we came actually in the wintertime. And, you know, we've just been coming back, you know, several times a year since then. Not exclusively to Rockport, mind you. I mean, we've been coming throughout the mid, midcoast area. We decided to settle here in a large part because it's very similar to our village in, in New York. We decided to settle here, in a large part because it's very similar to our village in, in New York.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion?
Well, I'm gonna go out on a limb, and I move that the board appoint Dominic Cordisco to the Comprehensive Plan Committee.
Second. Any further discussion?
And this is the type of committee that you, a majority of our people will be from here.
Yeah, I hope so.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, Bill, did you allude to that earlier? The breakdown of resident and non-resident, I think the majority of them are.
Yeah, I think all of the others are.
All right, I just wanted, you know, just asking that question.
Sure, and they're, obviously, they own...
And they're a homeowner here. Dominic is a homeowner here in this way. Anything else? Okay, all in favor? Okay, all in favor and all, all eyes, no nays. Okay, Sally Cook. I think we all know Sally, too. So Sally, thank you for putting in a application.
Well, I look forward to this. When I moved here in the nineties, Eleanor Boyd and I started attending the Comprehensive Plan Meetings. Taylor was, it was Charlton, I think, was chair, and, but I still remember some of Taylor's comments. And it was fun, and we learned a huge amount about Rockport.
Yeah.
And learned to love it, starting there, so, yeah.
Good, thank you. Any questions, motion?
I move we appoint Sally Cook to the Comprehensive Plan Committee.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? All right, all eyes, no nays. Next one is Richard Anderson. Nobody knows Richard Anderson. Just kidding. Thank you, Richard, for putting in your application. Does, do you have anything that you'd like to say, or does anybody have any questions?
I enjoy the planning process and participating in, in planning and considering how to do something and get something done, and I look forward to the group of people who are gonna be on it, it's an exciting group. I hope that, that with Dominic, for example, while he could not vote and wouldn't work towards a quorum, we could include him in a, in a Skype call.
Yeah, that would be my expectation.
Yeah, so we could take advantage of his participation without having him vote and make our forum.
It's questionable whether or not, you know, you really can do that, the participation, but, I mean, we've been interpreting it as participation by conference call is fine, and encouraging it. I know I have been encouraging it, because...
His experience would be, it'd be great to have him around the table with his experience, and so I would hope we would be able to do that.
Great, thanks.
But this is about you, Richard.
Yeah. Well, I think that you've got a lot of, you've been very active in other matters, and you have a good skill set for this, in my opinion.
Thank you.
I move the board appoint Richard Anderson to the Comprehensive Plan Committee.
Second.
Mark, you take up less space when they say vice-chair Kennedy Munder seconded.
Okay, Mark seconded it. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay, the next one is Louisa Van Bellen. Louisa, I know you from, you know, around town and a couple of things, and I was really, really impressed with your background, if you wanted to. I didn't really know all the background that you had in here.
Well, I've been around a while, and three generations of our family are from here, and I hope that our daughter and her children will nudge it to five. I've not participated in the committee before, but it appeals to me hugely. I love Rockport, that's why I live here, and I think that there are just so many values, so many things I value that I want to see perpetuated. So whenever you're on a committee, the temptation might be to, oh, throw out the old, throw out the old, just get something new, but we have so many good things going on. I hope we will continue to support the working waterfront or the open space around town. I know of it as living out there on the end of Calderwood Lane. It's a great place to go walking, it's great to have open space like Bochum Point Road or the Children's Chapel, which I knew as the Tamarack Lodge until it exploded. And when it was then donated to the town as open land and the chapel was built there, I just saw that as a wonderful thing. It'd be nice to see more of that, but continuing up Calderwood, you see the golf club, you see the open space at Aldermer Farm, and then walking around the corner, you've got the Seaview Cemetery, things like that, we should value highly. And I know we do, but I'd like to participate in a committee that has choices to be made and yet retain that which makes us, turns this into a wonderful town to live in. I have some background at the Kennedy School of Government, directing the doctoral programs there. I didn't do a PhD there, but I was steeped like a teabag in what was going on around me, and I came to know two hundred-plus students who were in my program. So I feel like this would be a great opportunity to dip into that, figure out what I, what I absorbed and what I could contribute to this group.
Well said.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, motion?
I move we appoint Louisa Van Bellen to the Comprehensive Plan Committee.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, any questions or discussion? All in favor? Okay, all eyes, no nays. Thank you, Louisa. David Cockey, is David here? Ah, there he is.
Hi, we've, we bought a house, I'd like to say it's west of West Rockport. Almost in Warren, not quite. Bought that was five years ago, we then spent three years commuting back and forth to Michigan, been here full-time for the last two years. Generally interested in community involvement, I have a general interest in ideas about planning, land use, and so forth. I would guess I'd say, you know, one of the reasons we moved here is we generally like the community. Doesn't mean I think everything's perfect and nothing can change, but I don't have any real, you know, this is what Rockport needs to do ideas, but I'm, one of the, actually, one of the reasons interested in being on the committee is just learning more about the entire community, not just the, what's happened, that I've been in the issues for the last five or six years that I've been reading the local press.
David's on the ZBA and the ORC, right?
Yes.
And I think your data skills will probably be very helpful, because part of the Comprehensive Plan that people frequently don't look at is the whole appendix that has a lot of data from the state and national statistics, things like that.
I'm not, I'm not a statistician, I said something about data, but I tend to be, have a skill at being able to look at stuff and saying, gee, this doesn't make sense, or this, you know, you could make this assumption from this type of thing.
Good.
Okay, great.
Can I just ask a quick question, because it looks like something got cut off on the application, but it just says, provide for the needs and benefit of Rockport's residents, and...
Rockport's residents also, I can't remember exactly what I said, but basically, you know, overall, look at things, you know, what's good for the residents. But also not just look as if Rockport was an isolated community, but we are in the bigger mid-coast area, and when you start looking at particularly things like retail, even housing to a certain extent, need to think about how we fit in conjunction with, you know, really from Camden down through Thomaston, and that idea, so...
Good.
I move the board appoint David Cockey to the Comprehensive Plan Committee.
Second?
Any discussion, further discussion? All in favor? Okay, all in favor, no nays. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, so, thank you for applying, and thank you for
Max.
showing up, that's ZBA. That's next. Thank you, though.
We do move the board appoint Deborah Hall and Jeffrey Hamilton as select board liaisons to the Comprehensive Plan Committee.
Is there a second?
Oh, it's set on our agenda.
I thought we did that at the last meeting, but I see it on there, so, but we can do it twice.
Let's do it again.
Yeah, okay. Denise, is that a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Also, I move that the board appoint Megan Dwyer, Joe Sternowski, and Nancy Albertson to the Comprehensive Plan Committee.
Just for clarification, Megan Dwyer is the Conservation Commission Representative, Joe Sternowski is the Planning Board Representative, and Nancy Albertson is the Harbor Committee Representative, so that's why we're not asking them to come up and speak tonight. Okay, that was the first by Doug. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mark seconds, any discussion? All in favor? All in favor, no nays. And I
Thank you.
think we still have a zoning board of appeals represent, oh, Jeff is telling me that he, he, do you want to come up? Jeff Parker, who everybody knows and is the chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
And so as, as is traditional in some boards, the, the chair will represent the, be the zoning board of appeals.
Representative.
Representative, yes.
Okay, do you want to do another motion for that?
If the powers that be...
Oh, to be on the Comprehensive Plan Committee.
Comprehensive Plan, yeah.
Yeah, as the zoning board of appeals representative to the Comprehensive Plan.
And, and having, having been in the same room as, as Taylor for many, many, many hours on the previous Comprehensive Plan, I have a good feel for what is involved.
Wait a minute, what's happening?
We're gonna appoint Jeff as the chair of the ZBA to be on the Comprehensive Plan Committee.
Be the ZBA representative to the Comprehensive Plan.
Yeah.
So David will be in as a citizen?
Citizen, yeah.
Right.
I don't think it makes any difference.
I don't think it does, either. Okay, so anybody want to make that motion, or did you?
I move that Jeff Parker be appointed to the Comprehensive Plan Committee as the ZBA representative.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, no nays, all eyes. I think that takes care of everything. Great. We don't have a, well, we don't have a first meeting date or anything, huh? But we'll, we'll communicate that shortly. Bill Napower, I imagine?
Yes, yes, Bill Napower and I are the staff members for the Comprehensive Plan Committee, as well as Mandy, Mandy Mariner Everett, who is the administrative assistant in the planning department, so she most likely will be in contact to set up or to try to get together a first meeting. So be, be checking your emails probably, maybe even tomorrow.
Okay, well, thank you all for showing up, and you don't have to leave now, but thank you all for showing up and volunteering.
It's actually nice to have company.
It is nice to have company, okay. All right, the next item on the agenda is the act on the request from RES Redevelopment Committee to...
We want to do Max, now go back to...
Oh, I'm sorry, Max, Max, is Max here? Max, I've heard all about you for so long, and it's nice to finally meet you, thank you.
And she didn't hear from me.
Okay, so...
No, I didn't tell her.
No. So as we know, as we covered on the consent agenda, Emily Lusher has resigned from the ZBA, and Jeff Parker, as the chair of the ZBA, wholeheartedly recommends Max McCool to be the new ZBA representative. So Max, would you like to say a few words?
I guess just my background is I was born here in Rockport, lived abroad for a while, and now I live on the same road that I was born on. As far as my qualifications for the zoning board, I work in construction. My family and I do property development in town, so I interact with these issues all the time. There's things that I agree with and things that I don't, and I just want to be a part of the discussion when that happens. You know, and also, I enjoy this sign here saying that, you know, our community is changing, and I agree with that, and might as well be a part of the conversation than just sitting on the sidelines, so...
That's great.
That's why I'm here.
Thank you, and one of the things that you mentioned in your application was trying to get younger people involved, which is, is great, and hopefully, as you said, by your own participation.
I'm not gonna actively recruit younger people, but I just, I'm kind of saying that, you know?
Yes, by your participation.
I'm actually influenced by friends of mine that are, serve on other boards in other towns around here. And, you know, if, if me being on a board encourages other people, then great.
Yep.
Yeah.
Great.
I don't want to hear okay boomer, though.
I don't even know what that means. See, that's the generation behind me. I'm not even, you know...
You're not that young.
I'm not that young.
No, no, no.
No.
Okay.
I move we appoint Max McCool to the ZBA.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor? No nays? Thank you, Max.
Great, thanks for coming.
Thank you, Max.
Thanks, Jeff, for your work and
Yeah.
roping him in.
I just talked to about six hundred very qualified people who will try and, I think, get in summer with something.
Yeah, and some of those people I've talked to about on the Comprehensive Plan Review, too, so we'll see what we can do. Okay, thank you for reminding me. Okay, next thing is act on the request from RES Redevelopment Committee to reopen RES Redevelopment RFQ. We only received, as you know, one, one response to our RFQ for, for the RES property, which I understand is really not unusual. And the RES group had their first meeting, and I think that somewhere I saw the wrong person designated as the chair.
Yeah, it's not Victoria.
Yeah, the chair is Amanda Dwellie.
Amanda Dwellie.
Yeah, and, so anyway, so we've had our first meeting of that group. We all agreed that we need to send out another RFQ, start that period over again. And so obviously, the, the committee has recommended that the board reopen, authorize the reopening of that RFQ period to, to begin, what, tomorrow and end?
February twenty-eighth will be the deadline.
February twenty-eighth.
Yes.
So a question would be, how long was it open for last time?
Six weeks, I think.
We're looking at a similar thing. How are we assured that there'll be other interests, or has that been expressed already?
That's been expressed after the deadline of the previous one, there was, there was, I had talked with at least two other developers, and I know Bill Napower talked with the two others, that were separate from the ones that I had spoken with. So I know that there were four that it came forward and expressed the interest, and for whatever reason, the timing just didn't work for them or whatnot.
I only ask, because if it wasn't enough time, we could extend it longer, but if there is definite interest, it sounds like more than enough time.
It should be, because it's, it's not a very complicated, we're not requesting them to put a whole lot of effort into the proposal either, just more ideas and concepts, you know, versus a full-blown plan.
And I want to make clear, too, just because we're reopening the process, doesn't mean that we're rejecting the applicant that we had already.
Absolutely.
And in fact, I think our next meeting, they're gonna be doing a presentation, but again, we just think that it's doing due diligence in the interest of the town to try to get a broader exposure, so I don't think this reflects on the people that applied.
I move the board reopen the RFQs for the RES Development and set a new deadline of February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty, at five PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
And the, that'll all be when, where they have to have it back to?
Yes.
Will you accept electronic, or does it have to be?
We've been accepting electronics, yeah.
Good.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Okay, all in favor and no nays. The next thing, Bill, is act on public safety building tower upgrade.
You may remember that back in November, the board had approved utilizing funding from the Fire Department Radio Reserve to fund the replacement and upgrade of the antennas on the public safety building's tower. After further inspection of the tower to see if the antennas would be able to be located, it was discovered that the tower needs to be replaced as well. There are several cracks in the structure, and the company, Yankee Communications, that's gonna be installing the, the new antennas. Basically, it said, we're not gonna replace the new antennas unless you replace that tower, because they're gonna, it's gonna come down anyway. So Chief Peaslee had got a quote from Yankee Communications to replace the tower, and you have that in your packet. Essentially, the cost is eight thousand, two thirty-two, sixty-seven, and that can be funded by the Fire Department Radio Reserve account as well. My understanding is the tower is over fifty years old. I certainly don't have the history here for that, but that's my understanding. Mark, you may have more information as well.
I've only got thirty-eight of it, I can't give you the other twelve.
There you go. But it certainly makes sense to replace the tower bef, you know, while we're doing the antenna work as well.
I've got, I've got no problem with that, I think it's, it needs to be done. My question is, though, when you, when you take the eighty-two-hundred dollars out of your radio reserve, what will that then throw further on the back burner for replacement?
Chief Peaslee, you'd have to speak to that, because essentially, we're adding fifteen-hundred dollars to that for the antenna purchase. The antennas will be installed along with the tower, so that's included with the... The antennas will be installed along with the tower, so that's included with the, with the cost.
A lot of times, I mean, I know that's designated or earmarked for specific things.
So the radio, the radio reserve is-- it doesn't, at this time, the radio reserve was set up because the county wants to go to digital. Right now, there's only about three or four towns that theoretically, financially, could at once replace all of their radios. I mean, the Fire Department is forty-two thousand-- do you remember what yours is, Randy? So, I mean, if they changed it, that's what that reserve is, so that we could have the funds sitting there versus having to come up with the money. So that's why we started putting that money away every year, so when this happens. It was for a couple of years out, but Linwood, uh, is no longer the Director. They have somebody coming in hopefully soon, and it's gonna be reevaluated.
And will, Bill, will see some funds put in that, in this year's upcoming budget to help return that back to its level?
Yes, you will.
I think we have it set every year until we get to the rough amount to go into that. Once we hit that earmark of the rough change over to digital, then we'll stop putting money in that reserve, was the original plan.
Thank you. In that case, I would move the board approve replacing the tower for, on the public safety building at a cost of $8,232.67, with funding from the Fire Department Radio Reserve account.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, all ayes, no nays. Okay, uh, next item is Act on Recommendations from Library Building Committee. Denise and Doug?
Yeah. So we've included in our materials a memorandum from the Library Building Committee. The library, the town, for some background, the town hired an interior designer to recommend interior design finishes for the new library, which includes flooring, materials, bathroom, wall tile, paint colors, and other interior finish elements.
Which is funded by a donor.
I'm getting there, but you're right.
Oh, sorry, okay.
It's good.
I just wanted to--
Sure, I know, because we need to cover that.
Interior designer.
Yeah, who's got money for that?
Yeah.
The town doesn't, but, um, and you're right. So through generous donors, uh, Nadine Cole of Cole Design out of Kittery--
My sister.
No relation.
No relation.
No relation, yeah. But has significant experience. If you go on her website, you'll see that she's got a lot of experience designing libraries. So lucky for Rockport, we've got, um, a good designer helping us make, um, decisions that frankly, a lot of us involved in this don't have that expertise. She's working through our architect, Steve Smith. On November 12th, Nadine drove up and brought her recommendations for carpet and paint color and, um, a lot of the other interior finish elements that she presented to the Library Building Committee. It involves, you know, some carpeting, flooring. She's got some, um, sort of pretty accent colored wall colors. Mostly, there's a neutral look to things, but she's got some, uh, bright moments of color. And all of the materials that she's chosen and assured us are of a quality and durable materials designed for a public building, um, that will be used for many years and will withstand, um, a lot of public use. The materials are all within the expense allowance under the li-- the, um, town's contract with FIA Builders, so this is just already within the amount that FIA has, um, bid for the project. And so at, at this November 12th meeting, after discussion with the Library Building Committee, clarification, understanding, you know, it was clear that Nadine had come well-prepared. She'd given this a lot of thought. The Library Building Committee, um, along with our Librarian Ben Blackman, you know, enthusiastically unanimously voted for Nadine's design recommendations. And the way the Library Building Committee's charter is written is that what the Library Building Committee does is recommend to the Select Board the approval of these decisions. So this matter now is in front of the Select Board for approval.
In that case, I would move the board approve the design finishes for the library selected by the interior designer Nadine Cole, no relation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Uh, just, I wanted to just add a couple of thoughts too. It was a very interesting process to be in on, uh, because again, it was a committee, and, um, we had to always keep reminding ourselves, "Look, we're not designing, you know, my living room or Denise's living room." So, you know, there're gonna be people out there that say, "Oh, you know, this doesn't look very good." But there are a lot of people out there that are gonna say, "This looks great." And I think the take-home message is, is, you know, "We went through a very good process with a very good interior designer. This is what we came up with," and, you know, I think we're all very happy with it.
And the committee unanimously recommended approval of it, which means a lot as well. And, um, I think that, uh, the way we had drafted the, the mission statement of this committee too was that we, as a board, do not want to micromanage what the committee does. We don't, you might wonder, "Why are we approving something that we haven't even seen?" But we're happy that, I think, that the, that the committee unanimously approved it. That Doug and Denise are happy with it, and we don't want to get in the business of micromanaging the materials. But what we do want to maintain is that the, everything is within budget. That's the Select Board's primary interest, I think, as a whole, which it is. Okay, anything else? All right, all in favor? All in favor, no nays? I just wanted to say one thing here too. Perhaps Denise, you could give us a, a brief report on the foundation efforts, fundraising efforts. You know, I keep hearing these rumors that we're over budget and we're behind schedule, neither of which is true, although somebody else can talk to the bud-- to the schedule better than I can. But I can assure you, we are within our budget. This Select Board has been very adamant about making sure this project is within the budget that, that we approved, and it is absolutely within the budget that we approved.
And we are on schedule, and I, you know, I've got to agree with you. It just is so annoying, you know, to have people who don't know what they're talking about and are experts that say, you know, "We're two months behind in the construction." You know, "I'm over there multiple times a week, uh, highly involved in the process. We are on schedule."
So I hope the press picks that up.
When you're listening.
Well, and just to comment on that, I think it's important to note that we do have weekly construction meetings with the contractor, the architect, the owner's representative, myself, usually Doug is there, Denise has been at some of those, those meetings as well. And we know everything that's happening, when it's gonna happen, and we are on schedule.
And weekly construction reports.
Yeah, we, and, yeah, and we get the weekly construction reports as well. And I think that, um, there are some instances where we're actually a little bit ahead of schedule when it comes to the construction, which is a good thing. Yes, I know. Now, we'll get five feet of snow every day for the next three months. But, and, and there, you know, there are times when the crew is, has been working on Saturdays with notice to the, to the email distribution list, because they've missed a day during the week because of weather or whatnot.
Yeah.
Um, and as we get closer to having that building fully enclosed, that, that'll change. So I think it is important to note that.
And Nadine, I don't know if you want to--
That's all right.
We've been talking about Nadine Cole, and now Denise is Nadine. Uh, Denise, would you want to comment on the topic?
And I, you know, without a lot of detail, but the foundation fundraising efforts are going great. We've got a good end-of-the-year result, so we'll, I think we're gonna report at the next meeting on the 27th.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
But things are on track, and, um, this project is, I think, turning out either as good, if you're an optimist, or, uh, even better than we thought. So it's, it'll be, there's a lot of exciting news happening.
Great. Okay, next item on the agenda, uh, after that commercial, was, um, Act on-- Act on Acceptance of Two Anonymous Donors for General Assistance.
So the town did receive one donation in the amount of $4,000 and another donation in the amount of $5,000 to be used, um, for the general assistance, um, assigned account, if you will. These, this is the donation account that's separate from the regular general assistance program. So these obviously need to be accepted by the board.
I move the board approve the two anonymous donations for general assistance.
Second. Any discussion?
Well-- I'd just like to say thank you.
Well, yes, absolutely, but--
Yeah, that's what I was going to get to, yeah.
So, I have a question with regards to, I mean, we budget money every year.
For general assistance, yes.
And we try to base our budget on previous history.
Right.
What happens to the money that's donated if it is not used in that fiscal year?
It stays in the assigned account, so this is set up very much like a reserve account. These donations are, so, and it will, it'll also help. It'll, it allows the General Assistance Administrator a little bit of leeway, where these are donations. She can, if somebody's in need but doesn't necessarily meet the, the standards that are in the General Assistance Ordinance, then she can use these funds to be able to help people.
So, uh, my recollection is we should have a fair amount in that reserve then from the last couple of years that I've been aware of donations.
Yes, there's over $40,000 available there.
All right, that's good to know, thank you.
Yes, thank you to the generous donors. So we have a first and a second. That was discussion. All in favor? All ayes, no nays? The next, um, okay, now we're entering into the, uh, area of discussion items as opposed to action items, although you never know, an action could come out of it. Any one of these days. The first item is Northeast Mobile Health Services Contract Extension.
So as you know, the town's contract for ambulance service expires on June 30th of this year, after the, after the town had approved a one-year extension, uh, previously. As part of that contract, the board is to have a discussion during or about the month of January, at which time there will be a public consideration of extension of this contract. So I'm, it's more of a discussion point, obviously, but, um, what I'm recommending to the Select Board, and we've been talking about this since I started, five and a half months ago, but I'm recommending that the Select Board extend the contract with Northeast Mobile Health Services for one year, beginning July 1st and ending on June 30th, 2021. And that the only change be requested in the contract is that we change the response time definition. Currently, the response time is, starts when Northeast Ambulance resp-- uh, radios to NOCS Communications that they're responding to the call, not when the call is first sent out by NOCS Communications. Um, and then the end time obviously is when the ambulance arrives on scene. Northeast Mobile Health Services is okay with this change. Um, I've already discussed this with them a couple of different times. Um, I, I will be meeting with, um, with the CEO on Thursday before the regular EMS Performance Review Committee meeting to discuss the language so that we can put that in if the board so agrees. Um, and then I would expect, hopefully, if the board agrees to move forward with this, that we'll bring back some contract language, hopefully, for your next meeting. If not, the first one in February. But I think--
I'm sorry.
I think it's important to note that this is a, a year contract extension will get us in line with the towns of Hope and Lincolnville, who have two-year contracts in place now that expire June 30th, 2021. My understanding as well is that Camden will be, um, pursuing a one-year contract extension along the same terms that we're outlining here as well. I don't have any, I haven't had any discussions about any changes in the monetary value of the contract, so, um, again, that should, should happen, um, I think, on Thursday night.
And changing this response time is consistent with national standards, whereas the current response time language is not.
That's correct.
And presumably, it will result in their not meeting their targets a little bit more often than they do kind of the current system.
Potentially, yeah, yes.
So I, I have a question, and you don't have to get up, Jason, but their average time in the last report was seven minutes or something like that overall for Rockport?
Yeah, I think, I think it was. Uh, keep in mind that that's a, it's a quarterly average.
Right.
So it's not, it's not a monthly average. I'd like to see the contract changed so that it's a monthly average versus a quarterly average, but at this point, I think, if we can get the response time from when it starts changed--
I mean, you and I had talked about something recently where, you know, it took five minutes to go a quarter of a mile.
Right.
So, to me, that's a little--
Well, and that's from when they said that they were responding, not from when they got the call.
It's when they were responding to the time they signed off, which again, is a quarter of a mile.
Right.
So luckily--
This is a slight improvement anyway.
That's, yeah.
So do you want to motion tonight, or just a sense of the board?
I think just a sense of the board is, is fine for tonight. Um, and then when I bring the contract back to the board, then we would have that motion to hopefully approve. So is the board--
I, I think this is--
I like the idea, and I think the change, uh, makes sense too.
I do too.
Okay.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the town manager's six-month performance review process. So, January 31st, believe it or not, is Bill's six-month probationary period ends, and, uh, he'll have been with us that, that, uh, long. Sometimes it seems longer, right, Bill?
Yes, it certainly does.
Time flies.
He's created a performance review form, as he says, uh, as he's noted here, taking sort of the best of, uh, what he's seen before, along with what we have, um, had in the past. And he's suggesting that you, if, if you have any changes to it, you let, let me know. Actually, I think we asked you to do that prior to the board meeting, so hopefully, you're okay with the form mat that's here. And then everybody should, uh, fill out the form, send it to me. I will aggregate the data, and then we will, in executive session, uh, following the January 27th board meeting, have, um, our six-month review with Bill. Does that sound acceptable? Bill, you want to?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to weigh in and just say that I will provide the board with my self-evaluation as well.
Yeah.
So, so, um, you'll have that within the next couple of days, so that you can have plenty of time to, um, to do your individual evaluations and get them to, uh--
Should we--
Oh, yeah, and, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Should we just use this, uh, one in our packet?
Yeah, you could, assuming, you know, we approve that--
Yeah, no, I, I just had a question, because every, every year in May, we're supposed to--
Yes.
--do a yearly evaluation, so here we are, doing a six-month one, which, three months later, we're gonna do another one. So, just something to keep in mind, whether we don't do the one in May and just consider that one now for the yearly one.
And the next year.
And then next May, do another one, but that's just--
And I have no issue with doing another one in May if the board so chooses. I mean, that's, I think communication and evaluations are important, so.
Sure.
So, um--
Just a thought.
Okay, um, if, uh, if the board is in agreement with the process and, uh, the form, then let's decide on a date that--
By which we get them to you.
You get them to me, so that I have time to aggregate the data.
Does Slacker have one R or two?
I think it's three. I just opened the center of the office and asked that question.
Well, a week before, like--
Yeah, I was gonna say, do you want to get them to me by the 20th? That gives you a week to get them to me, and then--
And then you have a week.
We need a week, but, um, but it gives me time, then, plenty of time to aggregate the data.
Sure.
It seems reasonable.
Yeah, and if you need an extra day or two, just let me know, or whatever. Okay, um. So we don't really need, do we need a, we don't need a motion on this, do we?
No, you don't.
All right, sounds good? Everybody's happy? All right. Um, next item is the downtown district parking.
And I just, I guess I just wanted to thank Bill for putting the time into developing this for us, 'cause I think this'll make it very easy for us to go through and evaluate.
Um, Bill, you want to talk about the downtown district parking?
Sure, so this is looking more for direction or, or policy direction from the Select Board. And you may not have that at this point tonight, but the Ordinance Review Committee met on January 8th, and one of their discussion items was parking in the downtown district. Big surprise, right? In addition, some of the board members had brought up this issue to me in previous board meetings as well, and on the side. And obviously, it, it's a topic that needs discussion and a policy direction from the board. For your information, and I actually invited Doug as well to participate, but I've directed Planner Bill, uh, Bill Napower, Police Chief Randy Gagny, as well as Joe Stornowski had volunteered as well to update that parking survey that was circulated, uh, recently, that was done in 2009 by the former planner, Tom Ford. We actually met last week, um, and began that process. And I've since asked Doug if he wants to be involved in that. He certainly can. And I know, uh, another resident that's been particularly interested in that. I may reach out to him as well and ask if you'd like to join in, uh, that process. The more people that are looking at it, I think the better off we are. This is certainly something that will be a topic of discussion for the comprehensive planning process as well.
And this survey, though, would be just counting what we currently have?
Yes, the first step is the survey. It's just to, to verify what we actually have currently for parking spaces. And then the second step of that is to make some recommendations, look at it in a, you know, bigger atmosphere, look at the right-of-ways the town owns, look at property that the town owns. Make some recommendations of moving-- Make some recommendations of moving forward, that type of thing, as, in, with parking areas. And it, you know, we're, we're obviously focused on the downtown because that's where most of the activity is and where the parking issue is. But it will be a wider look at, at that going forward, too. For instance, in the committee, we talked about the RES property. I mean, that's, in my opinion, is a great spot for satellite parking. We use it now for events. So, maybe that should be something that needs to be looked at, keeping a piece of that as satellite parking or, or long-term harbor parking for those recreational boaters that go out for two or three days, that type of thing, that can get a permit to do that. I think this group is, is going to be very good at this. I mean, Joe has already put together, he's put a lot of thought into what we're looking at. And Bill Napower brought up a lot of, a lot of information at the meeting, as well as Chief, Chief Gagny as well, so keep that in mind.
Yeah. I, I, I have concerns about what you said in terms of comprehensive planning review, in terms of, I mean, I don't think that we need, we should be waiting a year and a half before we make some changes perhaps to the ORC. For example, at the last ORC meeting, my understanding is that the ORC committee thought that they had, that they had exempted the downtown district from the parking requirements back in twenty twelve, and felt that it was...
Let me comment on that. I actually attended the ordinance review committee meeting. Denise was there by speakerphone, so I'll be interested in her thoughts also. As they were talking about this, I think it was Richard Rem...
Can I back up, just to give people some background on what this issue is?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Just because having worked with the ZBA on the library appeal and then just attended the planning board meeting with the hotel, we've got a section eight oh three of the land use ordinance that requires off-street parking throughout all of our zoning districts. And it has sort of set up an impossible hurdle in the downtown district if you have to literally meet the requirements of section eight oh three for a new project in the downtown district. Because it, it's not talking about, is there enough on-street parking for your project? It's, do you have an off-street parking lot? We're really talking parking lots. And then it specifies specific square footage requirements, and it would have, for the library, if you, if you found that the library, that one of these sections applied to the library, it would have required fifty parking spaces for the library. You start thinking the old Walmart in Rockland, Home Depot in Rockland, when you think of parking lots of that size in our downtown district. So, I think that's sort of where, as you're reading this language, it's an impossibility if we wanted to have any development in the downtown district. So, I'll just say that and then let Doug, I, I just want you to have that background. That's sort of what we're wrestling with, is we've got something in our ordinance that just doesn't work. And it turns out it was recognized. It didn't work.
Yeah, and, and just to follow up on that very briefly, it turns out that all the businesses along here, the restaurants and Bay Chamber, everybody else, had to have exemptions to the parking in order to have their change of uses. If they'd all been required to adhere to the standard as it is, you know, each restaurant and business upstairs, up and down the street would have had to have its own parking lot, so, you know, it's just crazy. But anyway, this is why it came up at the ordinance review committee, and the question sort of was, well, should we think about doing something about this? And Richard Remson, I think, who was chairman of that committee, brought up, said, you know, we talked about this, you know, back in...
Twenty twelve.
Well, he wasn't sure of the date at the time, but as he said, about ten years ago, we talked about this. And Steve Smith, who was on the committee, and Will Gartley, who also was on the committee back then, they all scratched their noses and, yeah, we did. We, you know, made a motion, we had a vote. So, subsequently, we did some research, and indeed, you can find the minutes where there was a discussion of this. And a motion got made by Steve Smith to eliminate the requirement for square footage in businesses in the downtown area. In other words, instead of basing your parking on square footage, just get rid of that. So, we tracked it down, but then on further review, further minutes and looking at Warren articles, the ball got dropped. The intent at that time was to have this be put into the form of an ordinance and then have it submitted to the June ballot for a vote. And like you say, this was January twelfth or something like that.
I think it was one of those Januaries where people didn't get their dates. I think it was twenty thirteen. I know, but if you read it, it has to have been...
They used the old date.
So, that was the intent, and, and nobody could really figure out where this dropped through the crack. You know, you talked to Steve and Richard Remson, Will Gartley, and that was the intent. So, at any rate, the idea has been out there, and it was more through an administrative error that it never made it really to the town for a vote.
Yeah, and even when we were working on the library appeal, Bill Napower just stated as a matter of fact, oh, no, those parking requirements don't apply to projects in the downtown district. So, there's just been this sort of ongoing, really mistake and misunderstanding of how our ordinance is written, so that's... I know the ordinance review committee, you know, is ready to sort of, once again, do what they thought they'd already done, which is to exempt the downtown district from the parking requirements. And I think maybe for the select board, you know, there's a recognition at the ordinance review committee level that maybe that's more of a policy that the select board should weigh in on rather than the ordinance review committee. I mean, that would be their recommendation to the select board, but I think it would be helpful if the select board could weigh in on that for them.
And make some policy direction, policy statement and direction to them, which I'm ready to do.
I, I think it's appropriate. I think we...
I think it's appropriate. I'm ready to do tonight, we can, we wish.
We have sort of an exciting, thriving downtown that we're really starting to see some energy for, and we put up something that, you know, if you weren't a longtime Rockport resident determined to work with us on all, all our little foibles, you might just walk away. So, I think we, we certainly don't want to send a message out there that we're, we're not willing to work with new businesses in the downtown area.
So, what's the next step?
Well, if you want to make a motion to, to, as a policy matter, on that issue tonight, to ask the ORC to work on some, you know, appropriate language that would exempt the downtown district from, from...
Off-street, you know, we're talking about the off-street parking.
From the off-street parking. Nine thirteen is, or, no.
Eight oh three point one.
Eight oh three point one.
Yeah. And there would be some other changes that would flow from that, just to make sure that the ordinance altogether works, but...
Right, right, which they would proceed to do.
I would move that the select board, let's see, how would I phrase that? I would move that the select board would support the policy and that the downtown zoning district not be subject to the off-street parking requirements of section eight oh three and as otherwise stated in the land use ordinance.
So, what you want is, you want to make a motion to request that the ordinance review committee draft an ordinance?
That reflects that policy.
That would reflect that policy. That's a good clarification, that we would recommend, yeah. Is that stated right?
Yep.
Okay. Got that, Linda?
I'll listen to it.
Yep.
Whoever's going to do...
Is there a second?
Oh, yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, discussion.
So, so I get this straight, is we have something in place now that doesn't benefit the downtown area? And we want to help benefit the downtown area, is that the...
That's the gist of it. Yeah, the gist, right now, there are, there's a requirement in the land use ordinance that if you're going to have a new project in the downtown area, change of use, other things that might trigger the off-street parking requirements, it requires that you have off-street parking of certain, of a certain quantity. And I think it's sort of recognized, we don't really have room for more parking lots. I mean, really, this off-street parking is a parking lot.
And this is only...
Only for the downtown district.
Only for the eight oh three or whatever the number?
The nine, is it nine thirteen or nine seventeen?
Only for the downtown district.
The downtown district.
And, and also, you know, it gives, correct me if I'm wrong, Denise, but it gives the planning board the ability to waive or, or otherwise, you know, partially or fully waive those requirements, right? But it also opens the door, and I'm not suggesting this has been done, but it also opens the door for unequal treatment of applicants.
Not out of any intent, but, you know, if in, you know, twenty sixteen, you're, a plant, a particular planning board is evaluating a project in the downtown district and looking at this ordinance and saying, oh, my God, we've got to use our discretion because we can't allow, our ordinance doesn't really allow it. So, we'll use our discretion and we'll subject it to this requirement. Two years later, you have a different group of people evaluating another project in the downtown area, and they're saying, oh, we've got to use our discretion. Well, okay, this is our discretion in twenty eighteen. And then in twenty nineteen, you might come up with a, so you end up with really some inconsistent treatment. And I think that's not the message Rockport wants to send either.
I don't think so, and, and the comprehensive plan does favor development of the downtown district, right? So, and this obviously places, you know, obstacles in the way of developing the downtown district. At the same time, I know I've had some conversations with Bill, and I'm sure he's had conversations with you guys. There are, there are areas that are being looked at in the downtown area as potential additional parking areas that, for example, the town owns. And so, this is not to say that we don't recognize that it would be beneficial to have some additional parking in the downtown area. But, and so I think that, you know, I certainly am committed to, to trying to explore those possibilities. At the same time, I am in favor of the motion that you've just made.
And I guess I would just add, having been both part of the ZBA library appeal and now just watching the planning board meetings, you know, we're asking our citizen volunteers who've stepped forward to be on these committees to sort of do something verging on the impossible. And they've come up with great solutions and have made it work, but it's five hours of time in a meeting as they keep reading the language and thinking, how do we, we know this has to work somehow. So, it's just nicer if we can give them an ordinance that is, is really makes more sense on its face.
So, is there any further discussion on the board or...
Well, I'll just say that I guess the thing that really struck me and puts me in favor of this motion is that, again, this was the intent back in twenty thirteen, you know, to move ahead with this. And so, you know, just because of the administrative error, we've sort of lived with it. But I, I think with everything that's happening in the village now, it's time to take care of it.
Is this, I mean, are we going to be moving on, or are we going to talk a little bit about the second paragraph where the survey?
Oh, I think that's the survey of the on-street parking, so...
Yeah, that's the survey that the group...
We'll address that in a minute. Is there any discussion from the comments from the public? All right, all in favor of the motion? Opposed, all in favor, no nays? Great, okay, Mark, you want to...
My question is to Randy primarily. I think, are we or do we need any permission from, or input from the state? Where is that as a state aid road as far as parking? In other words, coming down through Pasco onto Central and up through town?
Very good question that needs to be asked.
Well, I, I only ask because you've been through a similar survey where the state has actually taken away parking from you. And if we're going to do it, I want to know what standards are we using, the proper widths and lengths?
We discussed this the other day at our meeting, so it is on our radar.
Yeah, I, and I had talked a little bit with Bill Napower after the meeting a little bit about, you know, what we obviously need to...
Because we may just open up a Pandora's box that we don't want to...
Well, that's right, and, and you know, from, from a former police chief's standpoint, you know, with crosswalks, for instance, if we decide we're going to start painting our lines and the like, we have to have so many feet of clearance from a parked car in a crosswalk entrance and exit. And then that eliminates more potential spaces.
The current statute just says you just accelerate and run through the crosswalk. Seriously, there's a portion of the stat, read the portion of the statute, Denise, sorry, Mark.
I hate to make fun of ourselves, but five oh two point two...
Of the land use ordinance, you mean?
Uh, no, this is this parking law.
Yeah, well, that's the other, that's the other topic, too, is that...
Whenever any vehicle is stopped at a marked crosswalk or at any unmarked crosswalk at an intersection to permit a pedestrian to cross the roadway, the driver of any other vehicle approaching from the rear shall overtake and pass such stopped vehicle.
And accelerate or...
That was the other point. The point is that then the parking ordinance, once all of this is figured out, then the parking ordinance needs to be rewritten.
So, that brings to mind talking about, talking about crosswalks. Coming down Camden Street right by the photo workshop? Just on the crown of the hill, right by the entrance of those two driveways, there's a crosswalk. Does that meet any of the...
I don't know who put that in, to tell you the truth.
Well, it's been painted after I left, so that goes back to...
I don't know who put that in or who painted it. How's that?
No, I just, it just reminded me of that the other day, but...
And then these, all of that needs to be discussed, and we talked about that in that initial meeting, is that all of that type of thing is, is what we need to look at. So, Joe might not have known he was going to bite off all of that work to do, but...
And certainly, taking note to what our road right-of-ways are, because if we need to make our roads wider in certain places to accommodate parking properly and more safely, then that's what we do.
Or if we have to look at making some streets one-way to accommodate parking.
South or north?
There's all sorts of options.
Yeah. And so, and so I think that the takeaway here, both for the on-street and, and off-street parking, is not that we don't acknowledge that parking needs to be addressed. But that we don't think that the off-street parking requirements obviously should apply to the downtown district, but the parking issues are not, don't end there.
Right, and I think it's been, and it has been said, that it's in any business's interest to make sure it has adequate parking. It doesn't do them any good to open a business and not have a place for their customers to park. So, I think the combination of the town trying to work on this issue as well as the businesses, I think, is, is a good result for the downtown district.
Yep, okay. Moving on, we have future meetings here. Listed, our next board meeting is the twenty-seventh. And February tenth after that. So, the next item is select board reports. Doug, do you want to, or I'm sorry, liaison reports. Do you want to start?
Sure, let's see, the planning board has various small projects that they've been looking at and taking care of various day, home daycare centers, things like that. The big topic, again, at the last meeting was the hotel and the parking issue. And planning board asked that the zoning board of appeals look at other properties that are owned by the, by the proposed owner of the hotel to see if they could get an allowance for parking at the other, at these other states. And so, that's going to happen in a week or two. Library committee, they had a couple of meetings, actually, fairly recently to meet with the foundation to explore ways to share fundraising activities going into the future. Investment committee has not met. Parks and beautification, a little bit of good news and some bad news on this. I'll give you the good news first. The library, remember, there's sort of two projects here. There's the library side and the memorial park, and we split them up. And I'm just going to talk right now about the library side. The landscaping plans for that are coming along very well. We're down to reviewing the plant list with some of our local experts here. And I would expect to get a bid package from the landscape architect in four weeks or six weeks. The bad news is that I'm recently coming to the realization that we really are not going to have money to complete, complete the package that we'll be sending out, that we would send out to bid. And by that, I mean, the foundation has done a great job. They've raised a lot of money, but their mission was to raise money for the building itself. the building itself. And so they're, they're sort of reaching the end of their, uh, current, uh, charge. And we said all along that, um, you know, we would try to raise the money for the landscaping when the time arrived. And we're, we're getting dangerously close to that now. And again, the foundation is pretty well tapped out. I don't know if we have any landscaping ferry that's gonna arrive. Now, on the other hand, I think it's important to point out that this was anticipated. Uh, the contractor in his contract has an obligation to make sure that at the completion of the building, uh, all open areas are seeded with grass, grass is there, and all pathways will be compacted gravel. So we won't be leaving the site like a mud pit with, you know, lumber laying around and everything else. So it'll look nice. And clearly, this is something that can be, uh, addressed, uh, in the future, you know, it doesn't have to have the planting, the planting's the very day that we open. Um, so, uh, we're hopeful that, you know, we can still do some fundraising and get something done there. But, uh, again, I just want to bring it to people's attention that, uh, this may not happen the way I had hoped it would, uh, so.
And I, and I did reach out to, uh, the neighbors we talked that night and let them know of the efforts, uh, for screening.
Yep.
And they were greatly appreciative of, uh-
That was Beth, yeah, good.
Yeah, no, she was thankful. She, she liked the idea of the evergreens, the perennials and whatever the third one was that we're gonna put in a little kidney-shaped-
That little area.
-area to help shield the headlights-
Yeah.
-from her house, so.
Good.
Yep, it was good.
Finally, the library, uh, project itself, the eaves and soffits and, uh, sheathing on the roof is just about completed, should probably be completed by the end of this week. Uh, the lower level upgrades, uh, agreed upon with, uh, the, the donors, um, are being firmed up in Bill and Bettina and the donors, I guess, are working on the paperwork to formalize it. And interior walls should be going up within two weeks, so, um, things are happening.
Um, did, I had sent out an email about having received two different draft contracts for that to review.
Yeah, I've gotta reconcile those, I haven't gotten back to reconciling them.
Yeah, because, um, yeah, the one doesn't say much and the other one that you had forwarded to me was much closer to, I think, what we need, so.
And there's, but then there's the underlying contract, right?
Yeah, the underlying contract, which is supposed to be the A, uh, A A contract, A I A, whatever it is, uh, architectural contract.
I have to reconcile those, I don't know.
All right.
I, I can help you with that second piece, but if we, do we have anything from, on the, do we have the construction contract for the lower level?
Bettina's supposed to get us that, right?
She's supposed to get us that, correct?
Hasn't.
I don't, I don't think I've seen it yet.
Okay.
Because I'm also working on the parking contract and the intersection contract.
All right.
Oh, yeah.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, it's fine, it's just if it's, if the monkey's on her, that's fine.
Right.
Because they're the ones who have to know when-
Yes.
-to do the work, so it's good.
Denise?
Um, let's see, uh, Opera House committee meeting I missed last week. Um, and sort of the fundamental focus there is working on some marketing efforts to, um, uh, get the word out that we have a great venue in the Opera House. Uh, the Z B A is gonna have a meeting on the twenty-second, uh, to talk about parking. And, um, then Legacy Rockport is, uh, working on, I think Linda's very involved in that, uh, in a big bicentennial, uh, main bicentennial celebration, March fifteenth, is that right? There'll be a big dinner in the Opera House and lots of other activities happening that day, so mark it on your calendars and, um, you know, there'll be press going out about it, but, um, it's some exciting things happening.
So Bill, will you make sure that the planning board and the Z B A, I saw Joe here tonight, but, um, will you make sure that the planning board and the Z B A knows about the vote that we took tonight?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
So that, even though it has to be passed by the town in June, at least they know where the select board's policy is and what's gonna go on the, where we're headed for a ballot initiative.
All three, plus the ordinance review committee will get, will get that information as well.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, Mark?
Doug already ta, uh, touched on the parks, beautification one. Conservation, uh, had a meeting to which I was a day early for and then missed it the, the day that it happened. So anyway, it's been a interesting few days. Um, and the EMS ambulance, one is coming up, uh, Thursday.
Yep.
Yeah, sixteenth.
Um, and the Doug Cole Legacy Project of the Midcoast Solid Waste Corporation. I've been, I, I've been successful in roping Bill into some of these efforts, um, uh, more than he probably wanted to be. But, um, anyway, we have, uh, a number of things going on right now. We're trying to get a budget drafted and approved, which has, uh, had its challenges. And I'll just leave it there for the time being. Normally, we have a budget, well, we're, we aim to have a budget to the select board by December thirty-first, that didn't happen. We intend to have it to the select board by the end of January, uh, which the town managers have said are, is in line with their needs and doing the town budgets. We had the finance committee, which I'm on, um, the finance committee met with Camden, uh, National Wealth Management for their quarterly meeting, uh, last Friday. And, um, I'm gonna get you a copy of the, uh, presentation that they did. But, um, basically, um, they have an estimated annual income for our portfolio of thirty-seven thousand plus, um, I think year, uh, value of, uh, I think, uh, year thus far, year, uh, since, since we started investing the funds, we've had earnings, total earnings, um, that they record thus far of over thirty thousand. So it's a lot better than sitting in a bank account like they were before, so. Uh, anyway, um, there's more to be had on, uh, reported at some point on all of that. But anyway, I'll make sure you get a copy of it when I receive it electronically. Um, the governance committee, we have worked, uh, hard on the governance committee, which I chair, to make, uh, recommendations to the board on changing the bylaws and potentially the inter-local agreement, which has to be changed by the four towns, uh, through ballot and town annual meeting process. But, uh, that's not gonna be for this coming June, I don't think. But bylaws are gonna actually be addressed by the board at their upcoming meeting, the end of January. So, um, we're going to streamline some things, like the fact that two town managers and the facility manager have to be present in order to establish a quorum of the board, uh, when neither the town managers nor the facility manager have a vote. So why do they, you know, why are we robbed of a quorum because they're not there? I mean, that's just crazy, craziness. So, we're, um, addressing some of the craziness, uh, right away, um, in January in a couple weeks. And, uh, and then there'll be sort of a rolling, uh, rolling amendments that are made over the course of time, so.
How are the daily operations going? I mean, you know, this is all very high-level stuff, but, you know, I know that, um, you know, we went through a little bit of a rough patch, uh, during a transition and things settle down now and?
Um, that, operationally, I, I think they're pretty-
I think the staff that's there, yeah, I think it's pretty even. I think the staff that's there know what they're doing and run the daily operations pretty well.
Yeah.
Not a lot of drama.
Right.
Right.
And, and just to piggyback on what Deborah's saying about Midcoast Solid Waste, I also serve on the Strategic and Capital Planning Committee for Midcoast Solid Waste, which hadn't met since, uh, the previous April. Um, and we had, we, we started meeting in, um, I think October, I remember October or November. Anyway, um, to actually put a strategic plan and a capital plan together for the corporation because there has not been one. That was the first question I asked, was, well, let's see the plan so we can update it. And it was a blank piece of paper, there was no plan. So we're starting from scratch, which is not necessarily a bad thing, but we're building that. Um, and that's another thing that we're, that I've been working on with, um, some of the other members of that committee from the board of directors as well, so.
And there's a small, um, detail that the governing documents require there to be a plan and required to be updated every year, et cetera, et cetera.
So when we tried to update it, it was difficult to update it since it wasn't.
It wasn't anything to update. So anyway, we're trying to whip things into shape, yeah.
Make progress.
Thank you, Doug. Uh, okay. Uh, I think, I think that's it, um, other than the executive session? Somebody wanna make a motion?
I move, uh, to enter executive session to discuss, uh, contracts connected with the use of real or personal property pursuant to one M R S section four oh five six C.
Second.
Is that a second?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, discussion, all in favor, no nays? Okay, thank you.